Good evening, guys.
Hey, how we doing?
Good evening, ma'am.
I will come checking with you. My nine o'clock got moved to a one o'clock in the afternoon, so I'll see you before that.
Okay, sure. And I have them with me in the car tonight. If you want it in port tomorrow, or you can just leave them there and pick up tomorrow, whatever suits.
Um, if it's not raining, maybe I'll take them.
Right. They're boxed up for you anyway.
They give me all kinds of papers. Come on.
Hey.
How are you doing?
Those of you that are new or not performing, who are live streaming on YouTube. All right, start the May workshop. Supervisors, the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence for military and first responder.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing.
Thank you.
All right, roll call, Ms. Brienstein.
President.
Mr. Gallow, Chris is not here.
Mr. Gallow, here.
And I'm here. All right, citizens' concerns. We have our citizens' concerns tonight. No?
Awesome.
All right, correspondence.
Okay, what you'll see, correspondence, seeing that there is one or a piece that I have, I'll comment on that below in my comments regarding Teamsters. But again, I think the only thing I'd like to direct your services to is there should be the liquid fuels payment, which was, I want to say, three hundred and thirty-four thousand plus. And that is in your package. Excuse me, three hundred and thirty-three thousand zero forty-nine fifty-one. So that is now into us, and Estelon and Chief, any questions?
Questions?
All right. Keith Rimby.
Teamwork. First thing on the agenda for me is updating the building repair. We have one estimate so far since last month. We contact a quarter through people. Now, there are some companies that are saying that they're going to give us an estimate for the building. I have not seen them yet. There's a lot of places that do not do drive-in anymore, or they don't want to do the job, whether you're going to wage, or they just don't have time to start a business. So kind of satisfied with that. I do have one.
Uh, come, do we need to have three exactly that?
What's the estimated cost of the job? If it's expected to be over or around twenty-three thousand, then you want to put it out to bid? If we're certain that it's under that threshold, then all we need is three quotes and have it for our records.
Yeah, we did put out for bid, right? We're just not receiving.
Yeah, we're just not receiving.
So if we do put out for bid, we don't receive three?
Yeah, and if you said it, said it.
So if we put it out for bid, right, it's been out for what, a month now, I guess?
It's over a month.
Over a month, and we only have one bid?
You either have the ability to reject all bids and try to rebid, or you have to award it to that bidder, assuming that the bidder hasn't met all the specs. And I will say the only other thing I want to note is that if the amount's under, I think it's twenty-five thousand dollars per available wage, would not apply.
No, it's, I think it's right around forty thousand.
Yeah, because nobody does that. Drive it anymore?
Nobody wants that.
Okay, so.
That's what we're happy with.
Okay.
Second thing I have is discuss the fee schedule for the police department to be adopted, I guess. Resolution for it. So we recently had a pretty large inquiry for one of the accidents that happened on 176. The attorney sentenced a subpoena. They want everything that we have, videos, and it needs to be pretty large. So I started going through to see, you know, what our manpower would, what it would cost us. And I never seen a fee schedule from the police department. So I reached out to Exeter Township, and they were happy enough to send us there, so we kind of marked ours up.
Chief, have you consulted the district attorney's office about that request?
I did not.
I know the district attorney's office has been encouraging police departments to work with it for processing these types of inquiry requests. So they may be able to provide guidance or even help in a little policy.
Yeah. In the event that they would not be able to do that, I think we should have a fee schedule in place to help manage the costs associated. It's pretty simple, depending on how many hours you're going to put in. So in your packets, Chief and I have worked on developing a resolution that would cover those costs if we have to bear it ourselves.
You just put something in place to cover us in case of what you're saying won't apply? Or we can't work with that?
You're allowed to charge reimbursement under inquiry requests an hour each hour.
Yeah, like I said, we don't have anything in place now. Somebody requests, I can't figure it out, just all the reports. You have your admin time, the cost of the materials, everything. And it also would cover that if somebody would ask to, say, grant the police officers for a function, that would require their formula there, that would cost us for our hour, the rate, the mileage, materials, everything like that.
It's necessary to get reimbursed for things, because it's just, it's spending more money we don't need to spend if we can get reimbursed for it.
And when I say free, I mean, I mean, you have criminal history, record information.
So it's, he's inclined, it would be resolution two thousand twenty-five dash twelve. Consider that for adoption. Then we would include that in extra fee schedule, if any changes you remember.
We can't put it in this year's?
Well, this would actually modify this year's, but it would still be resolution two thousand twenty-five dash twelve. It would then be placed in our fee schedule, next year's fee schedule included from the start.
I don't think we need to have any more fees that we don't need as far as us incurring, eating the cost of it. I think it's in our best interest to look at allowing this fee schedule to move forward, because it's just going to reimburse us for the time and the manpower spend on things that we currently don't have the time or the manpower to do. So it's taking you away from being out in the community. Is that a fair statement?
It is.
I make that motion. Anybody else has a discussion, or chooses to?
We've just seen this this month, right? It's just, I don't know. That's how I think about it.
We don't meet for another month and a half, Mr. Bittler. So it might be something to...
Oh, we've just seen it. I don't know who directed them to prepare for tonight. It would be nice to discuss and have some information in advance.
Like I said, we just got it. I believe I have thirty days to provide the attorney with all the information for the case. So again, we can do it. We're just going to eat, you know, our admins sitting here for eight hours getting everything together, making copies of everything, getting all the videos.
We do have the ability to modify the specia, if we so see fit, correct?
Yes.
So if we put this into place to stop them from having to spend money that taxpayers are paying, why would we not do that? You have the ability to modify it. I'm sure everybody's intelligent enough to read what's there. It's not rocket science. You've got, what, ten or twelve things there? It's not like it's a whole lot to look at. And we'll give you the ten or fifteen minutes. I think everybody can handle it. And if they can't, well, we have serious problems.
All right, well, we have a motion on the table. We'll give it a second.
Again, turn on my conference. Wait till next month.
Yeah, next month. So we're going to eat the 176 investigation, which is going to take a lot of time, right?
I agree. I'd like to dig in deeper. I've seen this before, something I did previous life. This is everywhere. The ability to adjust it is fine with me, so I'll second that motion. Motion is accepted. Roll call, Ms. Brienstein.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
No.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, board. We worked a little, a little overtime this week. We got our monthly expenses, treasure report, and loss arrangement report. We also have the bills for signature proceeding. So that all was packed together in a real deal, I mean, for you, based upon your review. I would ask that, as we do have the twentieth, it would be a conflict, that we look to, where you improve your monthly expenses, treasures, arrangement, receiving, and then we can, again, sign on this.
A motion to accept the expenses, treasures, report, two, ready?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Our motion is accepted.
We once again have reviewed them, so I'll amend them though.
All right, roll call, Ms. Brienstein.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
Oh.
Thank you, board. All right, board, within your, within your packet, you will also find there's a letter from the Teamsters. This was sent to me, received it a second. Obviously, just the timing on this, did not get part of our last meeting. So we all know that their agreement will expire in December, on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. So we do have to have something to rewrite our collective bargaining agreement. And they've already been contacted at this point in time. I think they're looking at early June to set up a meeting. So I just want to keep you informed of that. And as we move forward, and there's a date available, I will send that to you via email, so that you're aware of it. We can, because that will be the board's prerogative, and you'll have to have that as they give the states. They haven't given the states yet for that in June, so as soon as I have those, I'll send them to you.
Well, after we give them dates. We go ahead and decide.
I mean, we'll have to come up with a committee, correct?
Yeah.
Who wants to be on that?
Yeah, there's, there's time for that. I mean, they're just giving us dates. We can always go back to dates for them.
Want to inform the committee, so it's done.
Well, you wait till Chris is here, so there's all five of you who made that decision. Yeah.
I don't know if...
What are they talking about, maybe June?
In June, they probably delayed June. We have to form one now, the chemical June.
We can always modify it. A workshop in June, if Chris wants to jump on.
Have you guys seen, you just in one race or two?
Yes.
I'll be on the...
Who's interested in that?
I was on, I was on.
I'll do that one.
More than two. Two, right?
Absolutely.
You can have two or three. What do you want?
You need to remember, if Chris also joined, then you can...
Yep. That works.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, board. All right, the next in there is the ATS warrant for a camera spook. And I also discussed that with Dee, which is the UV light. As you are all aware, I believe it's been made aware to our public before, is that we had an issue, there appeared to have been a break-in over at Jupiter Park, which caused damage to our UV light system.
When you say appeared to be, it either is, or it is. Which, which would you, well, let's say I start cheating. What would you think?
Was that a break-in or not?
I would have to ask Corporal Cooper. He was the one that investigated.
If I could just say something, because we got the last piece today, which was the probe, which is encased in a stainless steel, basically threaded nickel, if you will, that goes in. We replaced everything, the court sleeve, the bulb, all that stuff, still wasn't working. Called ATS, which is Aqua Treatment Services, not ATS as we know. Anyway, I was troubleshooting with the guy. Um, anyway, I was troubleshooting with the guy. He's like, I don't know if something's not right. And he said, you know, unscrewed the probe out of this stainless steel nipple. And lo and behold, it was just shattered, cracked. And I thought, so I was like, yeah, this is what I found. He goes, that just doesn't happen. He goes, even if it freezes, i- i- if it would freeze, it's not going to do that with this probe. He goes, somebody tampered with it. He goes, that's the only thing I can tell you.
And my recall, the last information we had from Corporal Cooper was that in fact it was indeterminate as to the investigation of the...
I'm just simply passing on what I was told, and literally that was yesterday.
So in the meantime, we have ordered the part that we require.
It's installed.
It's installed. Uh, I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. Barry called me at about, about noon, uh, and let me know that it did get completed. Uh, so my next call is to MJ Ryder tomorrow morning to have them come out and we have to do our initial testing so that we can open that water point at the plant.
How much it repairs is it worth?
Well, for instance, just the probe was $740. Um, you're probably looking at like two grand. Um, in that, you know, while we were in there working, I couldn't figure out why the well, when we kept on, opened up the control box and that was tampered with. That was, the capacitor inside was just, I mean, it's, the casing outside is fairly new. Um, so there, I, my, from what I believe, it was messed with, especially with this guy's thing, you know, from yesterday, so.
No, my question was, I'm looking at the ATS quote and justifying that we probably have half the amount of this in damages.
Correct. For it to happen again.
So to your answer, probably, I'm going to say eighteen hundred, two grand. It's all said and done.
Someone take a third of this cost down hand.
Two and four, volume change?
Yes, right, possibly three.
Yeah, or three, two, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two, three, four.
Two, three, four, yeah.
I don't, not a hundred percent, I mean, I'm not, not clear, I'm one, but...
Yeah.
Again, as I stated, things can be added at any point in time.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was thinking option two, three.
And we had asked, actually, when I had the rest, she was great about it. Um, and again, we talked about different options on the table rather than having it all as one package. So we could do that. It's like what we wanted to increase or decrease as, as need be over time.
Uh, is there, one of these cameras, the six that are out there, which is one to cover the pavilion?
No. So, so the, the door we think they got in is a roll-up door. Uh, what, again, i- i- if this is what in fact happens, um, there are two pins that go into either side, basically, to secure the place. But if you push hard up the center, that you could actually push it up enough to potentially slide in there, uh, and then open the door from the inside. Um, so what we did was we did put locks on those now.
We have locks on there?
Yeah, we do. We do have locks on those. Um, and now I don't think that would even be a, a possibility to try to push that up, um, you know, because they'd kind of work it to pull them out. So in any case, um, we looked at it, Rich came out, we looked up and it was one cameras up above the door. It doesn't face, it even doesn't face the door. So unless you have somebody walking right up to it, uh, walk right up onto that pavilion, you're probably not going to see them. They could very easily come in from another angle. So that's what we talked about for our cameras.
Like I said before, that, that facility is not monitored. We have plenty of cameras here. That's, they have mostly twenty-four seven. Kind of a no-brainer to make sure that...
Some people are going to start using it.
Is there anybody that's defining where we're putting these cameras? Because if we already got six of them there...
ATS would.
I know that, I mean, it's new.
Replacing their location to make them optimal view. I mean, there's ones there that we don't have access to right now. Nobody knows.
Yeah, and, and the cameras themselves are ubiquitous. They're, they're grainy, um...
Oh, I'm not arguing replacing some cameras, but I'm saying if you're going to put six, if you need to put six of them there, what's already there and what does it cover? You should be able to cover that with like four, if they're really good cameras, you know?
Well, I think again, you know, I'm, I'm going to trust his expertise on that and, you know, what would be covered. Because there's some angles on that building that are a little different. It's not, it's not a traditional square building, as you know. So there's some places in there I think it would be more appropriate to have some additional cameras. Again, I, I can't disagree with the assessment. Um, you know, just looking at the outside of my layman's terms, I can say that we probably need to work on that.
The, uh, wired internet connection, is there one there?
Yeah, there is.
There is.
I think on four.
Yeah, I think we need to...
Come on, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw that ATS quote many things for me. Not saying I wouldn't have them, or the owner said no, but I've never seen Rich to not be spot on with his layout.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion to accept the, uh, quote from ATS for the, for about the part payment system.
I'll make that motion. They got, choose options one, two, three, and four. Wait a second.
I'll second that one.
Roll call Ms. Brynstein.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
Yes.
And I'll, yes.
Thank you, board. All right, uh, next we'll discuss an executive along with another matter that will be brought there. Uh, next is the junkyard license renewals. Uh, we have a couple of us here for your signature this evening. And again, these are the two that we have currently, which would be, uh, Hewitt and, um, Hillside. Uh, I also have here in my packet this evening, um, a letter that was sent to us from outside. I'll allow you to read that. It's, it's pretty lengthy. Uh, basically, it was an individual, uh, that was driving through the township, uh, when the fire occurred Monday before this last and, uh, happened to observe everything that really happened from almost start, uh, through the period of, um, probably about seven-thirty or so in the morning. Um, and he just, he just wanted us to know what he saw and, and what he thought of, of all the officers and, and what they did that morning. Um, uh, he, he specifically, um, references with, not by name, but he references, uh, Mr. Gallow, our chief, uh, from, from, uh, engine twenty-four, uh, as well as the three firefighters from our public works crew who, uh, went into that fire, um, as they got on scene to, hopefully, uh, and it's turned out sadly, that was not into committed rescue, but they, they went on to push on to an entrapment. Uh, and, uh, they, they did not make it, but, uh, and, and God rest them. But, um, again, that's just a letter from them. I think that's, uh, just, uh, great that we had something like that sent to us, uh, and we want to share it with the board. Final piece I have, uh, in here this evening, uh, and I have this for, um, to be for either your signature, uh, by Sharon Rhodes, or for, uh, with, uh, Dr. Smith, uh, is essentially Pendott. Uh, if you recall, there is a project on Old River Road. Originally, we had received full federal funding for the bridge on Rock Hollow. Uh, we, of course, had already programmed everything for that to have that bridge replacement completed. They allowed us, by calling the state, to transfer that federal funding to the Old River Road Bridge. We know that that's not going to be started until probably 2027. However, we're starting the paperwork now. What this is before you, uh, there's a lot of online paperwork that needs to be done. So this is just a request. Uh, there's also a resolution that goes with it. Uh, that resolution will be number, uh, 2025-13. As a manager, me going in and signing those things online on behalf of the board so that it can be completed and we get the federal reimbursement for it. That's essentially all that really is. Uh, there's no decision being made on the bridge itself. It's, again, just federal, uh, federal reimbursement for the, the funding. So the board would...
You would like us to make that resolution now?
Uh, if we can, that would be fantastic, and then we can start that process. I did, when I talked to the engineer from Pendott, let him know that we would try to have that accomplished this evening so we get that paperwork started and, and be ahead of him.
And then we can pend up, that's probably early smart idea.
All right, do we have a motion for resolution 2025-13?
Yes, I make that have a resolution.
All right, do we have a second? We'll second that. All right, roll call Ms. Brynstein.
Yeah.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
Yes.
And I'll, yes.
Thank you, board.
Is that everything?
Uh, please, thanks, Charlie.
Uh, supervising reports, um, I should in the next few days have some, uh, documentation out to everybody on the SMP application database. It'll be a, uh, a Word document or PDF, whatever, that you guys can look through, look at what the process is going to do, how the screens are going to look. And just reply back with any feedback, or if you have questions, call me. And then, um, we can then start, start the actual coding from there. So that's my update.
My update would be, uh, had a brief discussion with Mr. Steve on the matter, and we're, uh, going to try and work out some of the, uh, some of the items, um, and of course, you know, we have our own counsel on that. We are not going to, I think, financing provisions similar to what our old lease was. Um, however, there were a few items that I think certainly need clarity. I think more on that till next month.
Okay. All right, Ms. Brynstein, zoom.
No, I'll get back to that one. The newsletter is more the priority at the moment.
All right, then the newsletter.
Yeah, newsletter, basically, like I said, everybody's got to get their rap together on what you want in that newsletter because they've got everybody's, all of the businesses in the camp township. And the next step is they're going to call everybody for that. As soon as they get enough funding to take care of that, then we've got to put our pieces in. So, you know, I think everybody needs to think about what you want to put in there. Whether it's fire companies, whether it's from the manager and the township in general, whatever, whatever you think's going to be relevant. You know, I think some dates that we know are going to be important should go in there and kind of like give everybody a, a copy of our schedule for the year. You know, it's not requiring what, we don't have to make it, like, yeah. So I talked to her today about that.
Thank you. All right, uh, Chairman Smith isn't here. Uh, Mr. Bittler, the end of the...
I'm not sure why that's still in there.
Okay.
We gotta read that.
Uh, fire companies.
Whatever came in.
Assuming, do we have reports or not yet for the fire companies?
So we do not. Uh, at this point in time, what I, what I would share with you, uh, is that Chairman Smith and I did meet, uh, as directed, with, uh, Bagertown Fire Company, pressure fire company number one, um, based on a letter that was received and had a discussion with them regarding that. Uh, we then sent a email to Gibraltar Fire Company, uh, and asked if they had received the same letter they had not. So that was sent to them again Monday before last, uh, and, and they've had that some time to start taking a look at that and what was in the letter. And then hopefully they're going to reach out to us here shortly and, and start a meeting with Chairman Smith and I, and we'll be able to report back later.
When you say directed, I don't have a recollection of what kind of direction that you're talking about. And that's certainly a meeting I would have liked to be involved with. So what, what direction would you give?
I understand from our last meeting was in the fact I was, I was to do that, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, I, I don't think so.
Maybe I'm mistaken on that, but...
Well, I saw an email sent to, to Gibraltar Fire Company, which the one on this board was copied.
Yes.
Do you guys know that that was...
We all got it.
Which email?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
No, I, look, I, I'm out of it, so I'm not, I don't have any information on any...
They can't.
Out of...
Any discussions.
They can't. They're...
Are you copying about the letter that came to the email last year?
We got it.
I'm talking about an email that this board was not copied on, that apparently Chairman Smith is meeting somehow, you know, with our council manager. And we don't, I, I don't feel I've known about it, and I certainly didn't like the email.
No, because you don't read your emails, nor do you reply to them.
I don't know what I read, man, and what you need to do is be quiet when someone else is talking. That's what you need to do.
I can say I got the email from the resident or whoever it was.
I got the email from the resident, Scott, but I didn't, I didn't get an email, and I don't know why our chairman seems, seems to think unilaterally. He can just direct the manager what to do.
I'm not disagreeing. I'm saying that's the only email I received.
Okay, so this is, this is again, this is again a poor habit that just continues.
You have to have to tell me to be quiet, but you just sat here with Scott and went back and forth while you were both talking. I, look, the problem happened...
Scott, did I overstep you or?
I wasn't asking. I was talking to you.
I, I don't understand why this has to continue. Why can't any supervisor who wants to be copied, be copied?
You get copied on it all. You just don't respond, ever. I've not gotten a darn email from you ever on this board, so...
Was, was there an email except from the resident or whoever it was?
It was, all it was, was that email. They, I asked if they had received the letter. They said they had not. I sent that to them.
The email, Scott, was, the email, Scott, was our chairman and our manager decided they're going to have a meeting that this board knew nothing about.
I received the e, I received the phone call. I received the information, Mr. Bittler, and I suggested that there might be a discussion. Maybe you should be quiet.
Maybe you're special, ma'am.
I got news for you. You don't, you can stop being angry.
I'm aware of this process, but as everyone knows, and Jeff as well, I am in far left field over the, you know, outside of the ballpark on this.
They can't be involved. It's not fair. Yeah, it's not fair.
Mr. Bittler, I'm sure that Chairman Smith and I would love your input on this. I know you have a lot of history.
If you'd love my input, sir, you would keep me in the loop contemporaneously. The fact is, my input's not desired. That's the fact.
The fact is, I got the phone call. I asked them to please meet with the person...
What phone call and when did you get? When, when did you get a phone call?
I got a phone call when the letter was sent from an individual who I'm not naming because I'm not playing this little silly childish game of slitting people's throats. The bottom line was, a person wanted to speak to them, to our manager and Chairman Smith. Whatever comes out of that will come back to us, Mr. Bittler, with complete information.
This is a board of five.
Yeah, well, you'd like it to be a board of three, so let's get over yourself and be quiet.
To the original point, again, no one be in this, but...
Yes, you can.
I'm not, just trying to explain. If there was an email, I believe there was a motion that everyone gets the emails, so I have to agree with Supervisor Bittler. They're, they should have been copied.
And we did get that email. After that email, we have a chairman now going with our manager. When you involve our manager, the board should be involved. And we weren't. If you choose, you two choose not to, I understand. That's up to you.
And I would absolutely say it's staying.
But why would we, why would I be excluded? You should be.
Oh, okay, I agree with that.
I got the phone call. I made a decision to allow them, to talk to them. That was it.
If, if, we'll make the...
Yeah, Mr. Brown, if, if Scott and I asked to be excluded, then...
I can...
The other, sir, you should be.
Okay, we'll do it.
I'm going to state on record, I choose to be excluded. I do not need to be sent the emails, the correspondence, the conversation.
Okay.
Same.
Yeah, we'll do it. Thank you, board. All right, uh, next in your package are the minutes and, uh, reports that we have, uh, to, to date for your approval, if you will, and what we can do is, uh, we can send the others as they come in. We can forward those to you for your review.
Uh, which ones don't we have?
So anyone that doesn't have a star next to it, we would not have at this point in time.
On the note for French Fire, we instituted first due, uh, program that everybody had brought here. Um, we have now fully switched to that as far as reporting, so we're kind of in a world war III to how to get a report out of it. I think we've figured it out, so we'll have something emailed over shortly.
All right, wonderful.
I think you're trying.
All right, we have a motion to accept the minutes and reports in our concession.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. I'll second what we have our presentation.
Okay, roll call Ms. Brynstein.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
No.
And I'll, yes.
Will you hear?
Okay, Ryan.
Good evening, board. I had, uh, issued my report to you. The first item that I have is a time extension which was attached to my report on behalf of Cedar Hill Estates, uh, requesting an extension through December 31st, 2025. Uh, as you're aware, because they were before us here last month, um, they're seeking, uh, some discussion regarding potential zoning change as well as continued DEP program.
Can anybody have any comments on that?
Yeah, that's a bit of data center. We, we already had that conversation.
Same site, and we've been...
Do you feel like we're making progress now?
Um, I don't know that much has been done since our last discussion. Um, I think that they are now going to go back and, and come back to us with, uh, potential options on how they would like to proceed, and we can review that.
Aren't they looking at coming back next month, like this month on the 20th? Might we not have to give them that information since we have to not move on the 20th?
Twelve thirty-one, twenty-five?
Correct.
Right, but you shorten that personally.
As long as we see pro, yeah.
This moving, six months?
Oh, yeah.
Something.
Well, that is six months.
Just about.
Yeah, we've got to give them, like, they want that, but if we see progress, there's no problem with extending it further, agreed?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm with you on that one.
Just keep coming and showing us that this is finally moving somewhere.
Let me know what extension you're comfortable with, so I want to be clear about it.
Let me know what extension you're comfortable with. So I wanna be clear about that.
You wanna give them three months?
Yeah.
Give them three months and then make them come back for an extension because then we'll see the progress.
August thirty-first, call it.
August thirty-first.
Yeah, it's close enough to three months.
The official request for time extension there is, is the board, the board will wanna act on that. To grant, to grant a partial time extension for three months.
And that's what I believe they're prepared to do now.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
We, we have to make a motion and act on that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So I, so you, you wanna make that motion till it's probably the Au- August general meeting.
You're gonna say August thirty-one or you're gonna determine that date?
Yeah, I think the August general meeting would be right around three months.
That'd be nine, that'd be August nineteen.
Yeah, so.
Is what I'm sure.
Yeah.
Three months, August nineteen?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we grant a three-month extension for the Cedar Hill, for Cedar Hill Estates by August nineteenth.
Oh, by the.
January.
The thirty-first.
I'll be for us and we'll let it take place from there.
I'll convey that back.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
Yes.
All right, roll call Ms. Brian Stein.
Yes.
Mr. Gullum.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
Yes.
And Oliver, yes.
Okay. Um, also attached to the tail end of my report, we received our annual request. Uh, it seems for the release of the maintenance period associated with CF Farms and the Livingstone Pop Project. Um, we are currently holding ninety-eight thousand dollars in credit on them. Um, and I do believe that they've completed work since their last request. So when Barry and I have time and we go out there and take a look, I wouldn't recommend you release that until both of us eyes on it. Um, because once we release that, it's our big, it's ours to have and to hold forever. So, um, we will take a look at that and I'll bring that back to you.
And make sure you're gonna cover us. Nothing bad happens.
Uh, next item, Zion Road Culver, bids will be open May sixteen and we'll have them back at your next meeting after that. Twenty twenty-five streetwork contracts I have here this evening for signature. Uh, in Chris's absence, I think maybe can Jeff sign those? Um, do you want a motion to have those signed? These are con- contracts for the two streetwork projects.
Yes.
They, they authorized a motion for award and now I have contracts that are executed by a contractor and ready for.
So we need to make motions to sign them.
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion on the table to sign the twenty twenty-five streetwork contracts?
Yes, you do.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. I'll second. Roll call Ms. Brian Stein.
Yes.
Mr. Gullum.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
Yes.
And Oliver, yes.
Okay, I believe that's all I have for you. I might have a couple items to add in the Barry section, but it's, we actually don't need that.
Okay, thank you. Colin.
Yes, good evening, board members. Just jumping back to that time extension quickly. As a best, as a best practice, you wanna typically only grant an extension until a board meeting because you don't wanna be in a situation where an extension hasn't been given, but you can't deny the plan because you don't.
Right.
Under my items, no update on the PAM contract pertaining to Grills Green Hill Estate. I know that Mr. Safer is here tonight. I understand that the municipal authority reviewed the agreement at its meeting last month. Uh, my understanding is generally that the board goes agreeable, although I'll let Mr. Steve.
Hold up, be.
Oh, so.
Hold up, Mr. I think, I think we're setting ourselves a barrier because it gives them a perfect, free, there's one way from the project.
So.
And we're stuck on this super plan.
So with that, one of the caveats that, that was placed upon that was the payment of ten thousand dollar maintenance fee, which was to cover any costs associated with the pump and haul agreement, specifically the holding base, if you will. That has been paid by Mr. Margasetti and it has cleared the bank, so it is, it is there in escrow for us if we should need to use that. Essentially, and, and my understanding, and I'll try to cover this for you, is that they're originally agreed to twenty-two homes on the pump and haul agreement. Uh, the, the materials have been ordered for the wastewater treatment plant. That they are moving in process to, to get those in. The concern was, would they have the wastewater treatment plant done in time to meet the twenty-two homes? If the board will recall, one of the things that we put in place here for the township was that in order to issue the use and occupancy, we had asked for Technicon, who's our codes, codes officers, to say, once we got to eighteen homes that, you know, we were gonna let, then let Brian Holmes know that we were gonna hold once we got to twenty-two until the wastewater treatment plant was online. What they have asked for is to extend that from twenty-two to forty homes on the pump and haul agreement. I don't believe that's going to be necessary based on what I understand. However, I think it's to cover them in case there's any delay in the wastewater treatment plant coming online, which should still come online around September, October timeframe, if I'm not mistaken.
And the forty is, your sales are, you're exceeding your original projections in some.
We sold, we sold the twenty-two quicker and we walked. We didn't wanna write sales contracts past the twenty-two.
We wanted to make sure that when you're going to sell, that you could actually, yeah.
We don't put them in a bad spot. It's a time request for the pump and haul extension. You, you said previously.
What do you think the likelihood of Mr. Steve's concerns coming to fruition?
I mean, I, I know everything's been paid for by Mr. Margasetti for this sewer treatment plants are walking away. It's really an option. We're gonna complete this community as well. We're committed to our twenty-two buyers now and then ultimately fifty-five homes in that community that we're gonna build through. We know we're not gonna pump them off forever. Nobody wants to be on the pump.
And if the board were inclined to say no this evening, what would be your next thought?
Unfortunately, we'd have to wait. We'd have to wait. So we wouldn't be, we wouldn't go. We'd have to wait till August when that sewer treatment plant's done and we're tied in. We have to wait for the, the build process. It's just, Jim, it's up. We have, we have interested parties. We're, we're, you know, off to it this summer. We have seventeen homes under construction as of, as of yesterday in the community and we're gonna have twenty-two settled homes here by September timeframe.
And so it, it allowed, essentially allows you to build in that timeframe. And, and, and we were waiting for all of the twenty-two permits to be issued at the time.
And to get a mortgage for those people.
Right.
Get them mortgages.
Exactly.
Proceed with.
If you can't sell, they can't buy, they can't get mortgages, and they can't do anything. So essentially, we're basically sticking it to our own community by not welcoming other people in. But we do have to be careful with the PAMs thing, so.
And you said the previous project, you wanna see progress. I think we can see progress out there. The building's up. I, I know, you know, trusses are on site. I've got a list of materials that have already been shipped to MGK Industries who's doing the work. They're working for Technicon on the process. They're, Rusal owned last week. Underground's were in, electric is in. I mean, this, this plan is, it's.
It's making progress.
But Mr. Steve's concern is that if we increase to forty, you'll walk away from building the treatment plant. Is that, is that right?
They could. I'm not saying it.
But you have, perhaps you've invested a lot of money already into building that plant.
They've already purchased almost everything to do it.
He hasn't purchased everything.
So there's this, there's a two-point-five-year dollar bond on that wastewater treatment plant and the completion of that uh, with an additional five hundred thousand dollar reserve on that for the second train. So when that's completed, first train is in, there's a five hundred thousand dollar reserve on that bond which will be held. And then that's what we have to complete the second train in case that is not needed again. All, Mr. Margasetti has been working on this in the process of being built right now, so I don't, first train's starting to go in.
We're, we're protected on that.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and the flip side is, is even if you guys grant approval, they still gotta go through DEP.
Exactly. So I think we're getting a little panicky when they've gotta go through DEP and we all know that process is not fun and it's not short.
So does the board, I entertain a motion to approve the execution of that agreement? I'm assuming that's what you're requesting.
I would request a board to approve, so we proceed with our sales.
I have a question. You okay with the forty or do you wanna say let's look at it doing thirty? And see what progress they've made?
I don't think so.
No, I don't, I don't either, but I'm just asking your opinion.
No, I, I'm okay.
So was I, but I wanted to ask what, you know, we get told we don't ask, so if I'm asking, gentle things.
Someone whose home purchase got screwed up by a government shutdown, I know that feeling, so.
Yeah, that's not.
I'm gonna make a motion to proceed with making your forty. And it would be an assumption that you'll be going to, hopefully have that station set up in October and November.
I second that.
We have a motion in the second. Roll call Ms. Brian Stein.
Yes.
Mr. Gullum.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
No.
And Oliver, yes.
My only other update for you concerns these higher quarry rezoning petition. I understand that developer went to the PC meeting last month and given the PC's feedback, will be submitting a concept plan, show them the type of storage they wanna do on the land that they want to sell, that.
Was there an actual petition filed at the court?
No, no, there's petition from Major B, petition with the county.
So, so at this point in time, so what the PC saw, that the representative Dr. Guarrie came presenting basically a map. Uh, there's a piece of property that adjoins the quarry, that is currently zone R one. Uh, they're making a request to potentially rezone that as Q one for overburden from that, from that mine operation. At this point in time, the, the PC did say that they would love to see more information, concepts, all on concept plans, so that they had a better visualization and then could make a better recommendation to the board.
Oh, go ahead.
So when that time comes, that we, we believe that'll probably be in the June workshop that you can see that now.
I'd like to see it because I live next to it, because that's it, father.
Again, this was exploratory, I think, and, and they consent to, to do some additional.
All right, public works.
Name of the project. Um, the Hopeful Road, uh, Bagertown project was completed. Went out there, made sure they were done. Looked over everything, everything was up to some of the supplies with craft engineering also had provided.
And I copied you a good email from, in response to a contractor. We're, we're waiting for you to get that.
Um, we're still continuing work on Buckholler Road. After we're done with the pipe replacement, um, we're gonna start milling and patching up there. Uh, and then after that, we're going to head to Cedar Hill. That's our next project. That is, one of the roads that is going to be the ownership application. So I'll update everyone, including the chief one. We're gonna do closures on there. Predicting if it ever stops raining.
Or that one.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Thanks, Barry.
You.
All right, Hart and Rec.
Hart and Rec, next meeting's May twenty-seventh. Location has not been determined at this point in time, so. Right, they usually move that to the outside down the park in, in better weather, so that's I think what their presence. EAC, uh, their meeting was postponed until May fifteenth. That announcement was put out and then they have the EAC two thousand four.
Uh, new business, heading into old business. Sure. Uh, all right, executive session, executive session. Okay. All right, so we're at technical session at seven forty-six.
Oh, yeah, there's nothing.
I got a turkey. We got them a father and we just got to be. So we did have the staff turkey. I placed it there. Man?
So you got a bunch of bees.
That was wild, a little thing. That was a lot of fun. I've only ever done that once on the side of the farm where then you could pull the side. Uh, so it's like really easy access. But I've never done like through drywall, you know, like, and it was, the crazy thing was like the most aggressive bees are on the outside where the entrance is, obviously. Like two guards, one fucking door.
Okay.
If you don't do the drive in your backside, you're basically carding, you know, from your own back door. So I mean, we have to bring a little bit of meat in there. Don't worry about who's gonna die in this house, you know. So.
The pictures were wild.
It could have already been back. Yeah, so.
You know what?
It's incredible what they can do. It's a good time.
It's really.
They get that in a month.
I worked at a mall in Mary.
Because when they draw that comb back, now some of it's white, some of it's brown. Uh, the white is new, so you can see how they're like guarded down, you know, you know. And, um, the life size here, if you raise a bee or one of those combs, when it comes like when a little egg, all the way, like a cap. Uh, green, like feel the one that picture, you can really see the capings. It looks like a, like light brown paper. So when they come out, they actually turn a little wax like brown because there's extra stuff in it and it gets on the line. So you know, if it takes twenty-one days for bees to raise a whole thing to brown or something that's open, you know it was there at least twenty-one days plus the time it takes to make that comb. So I think it was there like a month or two after they first moved in.
I'll save a couple of months worth.
When I, when I do a hive, sometimes you have to like re-space some of those boxes.
I think we're gonna try for this week.
People start to fill those rooms and it's like, it's amazing what they can do.
Only because I'm gonna get a blood state back.
It's a crazy thing. It's for everyone else, wax, they can take ten ounces of honey. So it's like the wax is the main resource, right?
It's, it's fully, I'm definitely working on these. Like I gotta carry it every day. I gotta work it out quick. But it's, it's freezing.
I got so many things I can do.
It's, it's, it's cold.
Nobody got stung either. We were suited up.
Oh, yeah?
But because I think we are really meticulous with that vacuum and we were like coordinating, like I pulled a piece off and you would, and, uh, you know, vacuum, you know, the ones that were, you and I were all dusting it back in front of me. And we'd go to the house, but it wasn't like just ripping it out. Probably, probably the bees when it went off, you know, that would not have been fun. But.
Yes. I said, we, we, we were foot-sounding generators.
And you weren't there.
Yeah. Well, they would know how, like, they decided to build what they built and it's all like non-spiritual, went crazy, it weaved and stuff. But the whole point of those boxes is to trick them into moving the building wax on those frames that people pull out. Because they set up.
I guess what happened was.
In between the frame is the width of a bee that they call the bee space. So, I mean, and somebody figured out, if they only give them enough room for it, what's in the bee, they build where you want them to build and nowhere else. Because before that, you would just take that hive, smoosh it, that honey would run out and that's what they sold, but he killed the whole hive. He did crush it like a wicker basket called a skep.
Yep. That was October twenty-ten.
Yep.
That was like a cat like, like crease that's named, named Langstraw. So you call it a Langstraw hive, it's in the box. But they need all different kinds. It'd be like a natural wax thing.
But the problem is.
Put on top bar hives where, uh, it's a big little set, like a little coffin, you know, because they handle down and put these, uh, things across the top and these will build down, uh, just like that, but it's all waxed. So like, the ones I use, those raised, there's plastic, it was really clean. But I roll away from, uh, it'll be waxed, it's like, it'll wax here. Yes. I'm thinking wax foundation too, wire. And I found that, just for honey in particular, when you spin the frames to get the honey out, those wax foundations blow out. It's just a little fast. So it's, uh, the plastic frames are more like idiot proof for me. Cause I, I tend to learn because it's a bit by the stage. Yeah. Wow. But I was out there today sending home because it was, the vice is cool. It's like a vacuum with two of those boxes. There's like chicken wire and like, uh, screen doors, bottom mesh. So I had to go through it, but not bees. And you set a shop back on the top, like send the hole for the hose to the bottom. Then it's going to the bottom box, three things like sucked out into the top box because that screen.
Because it's hard.
Yeah, but then there's a trap door at the bottom that I just walked up, set on my mind, pulled the, like, trap door halfway out. And I went, pulled the whole thing out and they were all down there. So if I, if you put like comb, and I found the queen when I got home, she was on some of the smell. She turned, uh, put her.
Was that their?
Down because they know her, they know the wax and everything. They can sense that. They can smell pheromones and stuff, so they look right down. It was looking good. I got a new, I got a roof ornament. It should be, I'll check it in like two or three days to see if that. I got a new, I got a roof on it, but uh it should be, I'll check it in like two or three days to see if that queen got the leg hanging in there. Their own like drawn funny comb in those frames, they really like, they just get one right now. I was like too, when I found the queen, if it's a beekeeper, maybe that uh like they swarm, so the like the half the hive leaves, the so then instead of one hive, you have two, that's a like the tide itself is the organism. So if it's a beekeeper that was keeping it, a lot of times they'll mark the bee, the queen bee with paint or a badge. It's a it's a rotating color, uh tells you what year it was, like this year's blue, right? So I bought some queens for hives that I might have asked for a case of once, so then I knew she was, you know, the next year I'll make sure about your own, right? But if that queen leaves, I can't control that, um you know, a beekeeper that finds my swarm, so I can't see a blue thing, there there's beekeeper around then. Now I copy, they're queen now, so that queen was more intelligent, so she was probably wild. Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah. But some guys, like I don't, I raise my queens like uh specifically like sell or doing kind of chat, um sometimes I'll let them raise their queens, but I don't use it like trying to, they're really making honey while they're playing. And um sometimes I always let them sit there, they'll raise their queen and it works, we're all there, some guys will have a queen hotel like Angie Major's, and they're scooping little eggs out, like grand family ones that eat, it's crazy. Uh that's like next level stuff, you know. It's like surgery, you use this little like uh almost like a scalpel looking thing, but it's like a it's like a spoon spin. And the the bee egg itself is a little grain of rice, like maybe
How do they figure out that there's a queen, they measure it?
They'll make it, they the the workers who are often, you know, can make a queen out of annual male eggs. Because they need to get dollars to activate, it's like sexual development, like it's, you know, there's only the queen is supposed to lay eggs. The workers, they can sometimes, but they don't. And biologically, the workers can only lay, even if they're all female, they don't lay male eggs. So you get uh it's called the workers, you only open your hive up, you'll look and there's all this, those capings, the drone cells are different, the drones are the males. They're like taller and they're really bubbled, as opposed to flat. So uh you look, you look in and because the queen is like shorter, it's longer. She can get down at the bottom of a honeycomb and she only lays one egg herself, so in the middle, there's only that's how the audience, I don't have a I've seen it before, you look in, and they're like stuck to the side and stuff, because the worker bees have a shorter handle, you know, and where the stinger is. Uh and they always like drone, so it's just everywhere, that's a problem, because you gotta fix that one, you know, that way, that is sometimes uh it's not, uh you you feel me, sometimes I'm building it's like a it's a problem. Thanks for coming to my headquarters. I I stumbled a couple times, like I'm not like any level class well, where are you going? Uh worse is I got stumbled, uh I was a little wacky and I took my stuff off because I was at the back of the hive, so I was like, I can see the back door. Uh the last hive I did is I hit one, I was a little tired and I'm like too far forward when I went to the front and like I saw from a backyard, it got into my nose, went up and it was a little break inside, that was something. I got stumbled in things right before I went to a wedding. Uh it was like the wedding was at like two o'clock in the afternoon, I was not like ten thirty to the morning. And this morning was like as the night went on, my pictures, like the pictures, you know, the next day. Getting bigger and bigger, yeah. By the end, I was like sloth. I only had one aggressive hive that like it was just when the sun's shining, there's something for them to go get, like forage wise, like right now is actually the prime time for that. Um like even when those are conditions are met, and it's not windy and it's doing good temperature. Uh like you know, the very long, like I could go without someone if I really wanted to, and maybe you have like a very small chance of getting some. But when you have a nasty hive, like genetically they're overly like, they're not actually trying to, it's like way more aggressive. Uh it looks like the bottom goes off, you can hear like hanging off your, you know, some stuff. And it's sappy, you have to go in there, kill the queen. Wait like three or four days, go in and kill all the queens. Sometimes they try to make, they make a queen because they don't have an egg anymore, right? It takes you like three days for all the eggs to go in. Then you put a queen in and like it takes, you know, thirty days to reset that and it's work, but it's terrible when you're doing it, because you gotta like find the queen in a hive that's crazy all the time. And then you gotta go in three days later, the same angry bees, and like kill all those little queens, so you know, like scrape them out because you don't want to replicate those genetics.
And then once you put a queen in into that, they'll instantly like chill out.
Because the population, it sounds like the the better genetics of they raised those worker bees, they're the ones you're dealing with and mostly like in the, like right now bees, their lifespan in worker bees is like thirty days because they work so hard to make honey. And they die out in the field or uh you know, die in the hive, but in the winter time, it's like four or five seasons, so. It's all about how hard they're working.
All right, come back in to regular meeting or other executive at eight o'clock. Um we discussed uh some details around a company claim for a terminated employee. And uh does anybody else have anything you wanna?
I will, it was pointed out a week or so ago that our regular meeting this month on the twentieth is the same as the election day, which is held in this building. As Terry McFarlane said, it doesn't need to be in motion, but for public knowledge, I believe we're gonna agree to postpone that, not postpone, just forego that meeting, this workshop covered us per may. Um not change the date. We're seeing everybody on the workshop on June twelfth.
I was a part of that discussion.
Again, did you read your email?
We just discussed it downstairs.
Yeah, we just discussed it downstairs, and you got the email.
Email chain that secretly goes around the block. I'm not part of that and I'm not in favor of canceling stuff.
It's called reply all, they reply all to everybody.
All right, um anything else, anybody? Motion to adjourn.
Yes.
We have a second. Our second, all in favor, all right.
Aye.
Meeting over.
All right, we do have to ask to sign the name.
Here we go.
We do.
I think you're, sir, we have not a good.
Not that I don't want you to sign checks, but I need you to sign contracts. They have to sign contracts now too.
Is that the first line here?
Keep going, I got I got.
He was not allowed to direct to me.
Uh, give me two seconds. At the top here.
You know, our side, right?
That's okay.
I know. That's why you did cover it. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to get the job, so.
You might forget, you're fucking original foot down this quarter.
I don't mean this rude, but you need to be like
I think it's that.
I think it'll be text.
And the doctor released me.
No, because they said in the ambulance.
We talked, so I can't keep it. I love Joy, I'm sitting here today.
Yeah, I know that.
People like it or not.
I did get that one, I know.
All right, did that check on both?
Oh, never mind, it was a credit, it's a credit.
Um this course.
Just maybe in there moves.
Uh yeah, this was to show.
Yeah. No. Be good for fighting. Your problems.
I appreciate it.
When it impacts you guys and quarter per
Worried about them three guys.
I know, but I know you're worried about them, so without you, I also have to worry about you.
Yeah.
If you were there, there's about forty-two people doing exactly that, that's why I know.
Oh, but I have, however, however. I couldn't also be when we're caught.
Yeah, I know. I get that.
Sunday's with you?
Sure.
Your daughter, your daughter absolutely, because my grandkids go down too.
Yes, I will be probably starting.
I'm actually little, so I'm fine, so yeah.
But if I can stop being, sure.
Yeah, you won't. She's your best buddy, right?
Thank you, as always. At six o'clock, I need to work. All right, guys.
Take your ride, we're gonna.
Hey, how you doing, dear? And that's just it. And that's, and that's all. But.
I thought she has a room in the house, so why would she?
There won't be a taxi car.
And Howard was talking this year.
Want to get you the stir, that'd be good. What's up, sir?
The camera's still rolling, can't say that out loud.
Yeah.
Just ask my kids. Can take you guys three minutes to get there. About fundraising and raising money for a very good cause.
And you missed one. Hey, you missed one. I know it's you, but you need to. Oh, God.
One chair.
This is, I might never get to.
Right?
You can do it, you're not three, but two's enough.
Two or three. All right, we'll take these, I want to do is keep this separate. Should we go through them? Oh, he's gonna be all. All good? All right, if we have any others.